Can I call this meeting to order, please? First on the list, we will have our land acknowledgement, and I'm going to pass that over to Councilor Hickey, who was away for our last meeting. Thank you, Councilor Hickey.
Not used to being back in the chamber and having to press a button. The land on which the city of St. John, or Mennequist, is situated is the traditional territory of the Woolishtewiak. The Woolishtewiak, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Mi'kmaq, and the Peskotumacadi, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources. Let us pause and reflect.
Okay, well, can we all stand for the anthem, please? All right, welcome to Monday, April the 4th, Common Council Meeting of City of St. John. All right, City Clerk, first item, next item.
Thank you, Your Worship. First item on the agenda is 2.1, Approval of Minutes of March the 21st.
March 21st Minutes. I have Councilor Norton and I have Councilor Hickey on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Your Worship, next we have Approval of the Agenda, and I just wanted to start with the acknowledgement of an update to the Staff Report 5.2, where it had a typo on the street name, which was corrected and updated on the website and with council. Next, we have three additions from Committee of the Whole. Those items would be 17.1, this is a recommendation with respect to City Market Lease Renewal with Sisters; 17.2 would be City Market Lease with Black Douglas Holding Limited; and 17.3, Appointments to Committees.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the additions, please? Councilor Redwan and Councilor Harris on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Next is Disclosures of Conflict of Interest, if there are any.
Councilor Killen, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Declare conflict of interest with 17.1 and 17.2. All right, thank you. Next item?
Your Worship, next is the Consent Agenda.
Okay, Deputy, over to you for that, please.
I would move 5.1 through to 5.12.
Thank you. I have a second, or Councilor Harris, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Next, Your Worship, is Item 6, Members' Comments.
Members' Comments. Okay, Councilor Hickey, it looks like you are the first one up.
Speedy this evening. Thank you, Your Worship. Last, two Mondays ago now, St. John lost a pretty significant stalwart of our community in Judith Minor. Judith was beloved wife of Ralph Thomas, of whom many of us know. At 81, she was a fierce advocate for our LGBT communities, our, and truly Judith was an advocate for anyone who needed one. She was a close friend of mine, and I know a close friend of many people around this table. I'll just offer about maybe 30 seconds, if we could, if we could just offer a moment of silence for Judith, and that'll conclude my comments.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, about a month ago, I brought forward some comments about a project that was undertaken by Oksana Postaska of Galbraith Florist. It was, it was quite something. There was, there was a lot of volunteers. I just wanted to bring everybody up to date as to what the final results were on this She, along with Kelly Lawson and Catherine McGuire, who some of us know through former Councilor Merrithew, and about 100 other volunteers, made over 1,700 bouquets of flowers. They raised $106,950 with these flowers. They had people that would deliver them, and former Councilor Merrithew actually took a carload up to Frederickton area. All of the proceeds went to the Canadian Red Cross for their efforts in the Ukraine crisis. So I just want to send out a congratulations to Oksanka and to all of the people that helped make that happen. It was an extraordinary event. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Deputy. It was an impressive event. Over to Councilor Killen.
Just, there we go. Thank you, Your Worship. So I just want to give a really big shout out and thank you to UNB. They attracted a national track and field conference to our field house, which led to 31 universities all being here. You might have seen some young folks running around in matching jackets. They were booked our hotels, they were here, they were so impressed with St. John. I got so many comments at the market about just how much fun they had in this city and how welcoming we were, and, you know, thank you to the folks out at UNB who organized all this, because it was a huge, a huge undertaking, and I got to take in some of it on Saturday as well, and it was a lot of fun. So I also wanted to just call out this really exciting growth update that was included in some information we received this morning. In March, we had 41 building-related permanent applications with a value of $35.9 million. So in one month, amazing. Just, St. John's on the move, and there's some really exciting things happening. So thanks to Jacqueline Hamilton, Commissioner Hamilton and the team for helping facilitate all that. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. If you thought you were getting out to a restaurant on the weekend and you hadn't booked it, you were out of luck, because with all the whole, all the teams that were here, it was really fantastic to see. Nice vibrancy. Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just for those who are listening, you should know that St. John is hiring, we're looking for holiday relief firefighters. So you may have seen in the news the last couple of days, a couple of our senior firefighters who are well-respected, have done a wonderful career worth of work, have retired, and we're looking to fill some positions. Looking for firefighters with a diverse range of skills, background, and experience to contribute to the high standard of fire service that we expect in St. John. If you are interested, you can register for a virtual session that's being held on April 7th at noon by emailing fire@stjohn.ca, and I'm sure there's more information on the St. John website. Even though things have relaxed with regards to emergency orders and everything in the province, we are still in a pandemic, everybody, and just, this is your bi-weekly reminder to wear your masks if you're comfortable, make sure you cough or sneeze into your elbow pit, distance when you can, make sure you wash your hands, get your vaccinations, most importantly, be kind, and one thing that St. John does really well is we look after each other. So if you know somebody may be feeling a little ill, needs a little help, or maybe immunocompromised and need some support with groceries, or a friend to drop in, let's look after each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and thanks for that reminder to be kind, it's always, always useful. Counselor Redwan?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was, I was lucky to actually get to participate in an event a few weeks ago, the Newcomer Center. They called it Jump Start: Empowering Our Community Together Event, and there was many people that were mentoring newcomers, and it was really great to see people coming together for that. I also wanted to wish everybody who would be celebrating Ramadan, Ramadan Kareem. So for anyone who doesn't know, it, it is a month of Ramadan for Muslims, and so Muslims will be fasting from sunup to sundown. One thing that I always appreciated about the, about the month is the last 10 days of Ramadan, Muslims are required to give charity, and so that's one thing that, that I've always really enjoyed doing myself. I'm not fasting today for good reason, but I also, with, with the speak of charity, I also wanted to mention that I did see an article by Stephen Webb in CBC that was talking about Ramara House, and that they were giving over 400 meals out a day, and Evelyn McNulty, who runs Ramara House, is quoted saying that there was a tremendous amount of senior citizens that they've never seen before going to Ramara House. I just think it's so important for us to keep watching to see what sort of changes are happening with different demographics, and so anyway, with that in mind, maybe the Muslim community will keep Ramara House in mind.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harris?
Well, thank you, Your Worship. Congrats to Abby Smith and Sydney Foy. I'm just giving them a bit of a shout out. A couple of people with a startup that is going to be coming to open this summer. They're opening a new music venue uptown they're calling Haven Music Hall, and I won't blow the cover on their location, but it's going to be a great music venue and experience that they're bringing years of, of knowledge and know-how, too, from their work with Quality Block Party. Also, First Steps is doing their Adopt a Room program, and so we are, a few of us in the community will be rallying a community build to get into their location on Coburg to do some work on the rooms that the mothers and their children would share when they're in transition. And so this is something that's open to the community. You can find out more, you can give to the program, you can donate, you, there's all kinds of ways to get involved. You can come with us and pay a few rooms and do some crackfill work on the rooms that need it. So that weekend that we're doing that is April 22 to 24, but again, that's First Steps, their Adopt a Room program on Coburg Street. Thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Norton?
Thank you, Your Worship, but the risk of sounding like a bulletin board, I'll, I'll take that risk. So there's lots that's going to happen as the warm weather starts to come in. Port City Beer Run and Brew Fest, I'm all registered, hope to see you out there. Not for the run, maybe for a beer. East Coast Games, Shriner's Parade, Freedom of the City, Memorial Cup, Rockwood Park, Marathon by the Sea, Area 506, Third Shift, Fundy Fringe Festival, all that to say. For anybody that says St. John doesn't have things going on, we've got things going on. So that's just a few of them. So the tip of the iceberg on that. Another thing we have going on is an engagement opportunity as it relates to ride sharing, and this one's near and, near and dear to, to my heart when I need a lift, and so if you want to get involved with that, there's a survey open at shaperyourcitystjohn.ca. Shaperyourcitystjohn.ca, and you can have, have your input as it relates to the shaping and the creation of a ride-sharing bylaw. And also, a quick note, it's my third term privilege to be, to be doing this, absolutely. It's a real privilege, and in my first term, we would often go out looking for good news items, and one of the initiatives that our current city manager had was to have a bit of a one-stop shop. So thanks to Lisa Casey, her team, but the initiative of our city manager's office and his team to, to put in a good news and an information bulletin for us to consume and dispatch to, to the wider audience. So it makes it easier, but it also gives you a better appreciation for the pages of things that we have going on in our community rather than bite-sized pieces. So, so thank you. Over to you, Your Worship.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Thanks for all the heads up on all the great events that are going to be coming up. As my kids would say, "We've got game." It's all true. Counselor Ogden, up to you. Over to you.
I'd like to also thank Ramara House, their 40th anniversary. Carol McNulty, who's an angel, who's looking down on us now, started that 40 years ago, and I, I dealt with her because she asked me to collect books and sneakers and shoes, and every time this time of year, she would say, "Could you get me sneakers?" I'm not sure, because of COVID, if they are collecting sneakers and boots and books right now. There was a stoppage there for a while, but I think last year, they served 140,000 meals, which is substantially up, partly due to COVID, but you might want to, if you, especially children's books, they, they last forever, but you might want to keep those in mind. That sneakers to a family this time of year is a really added expense, and children's books would not be at number one on the list for people. It would be their heat and their rent and their food. So all kinds of people have those things in their homes, and call Ramara House and see if they'll take them in, but the McNulty family has done a fabulous job there for 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I will also send out my condolences to Ralph Thomas and the rest of Judith's family and her friends. She's a big loss for the city. She was a real powerhouse here for anyone who was marginalized or felt marginalized. She was a wonderful, strong advocate, and it was interesting, because last week, Counselor Killen talked about Eureh, who was being released in a little booklet at the market, and on the last page is Judith with him. And at the time, that Monday night, little did we know that that was the night that Judith actually passed away. I also wanted to read just a quick little bit of information, as Counselor Redwan brought up, about, about Ramadan, and this was put out by Minister Husin, who is your federal minister of Canadian heritage. So he says that sundown, of course, on April the 1st, Muslims in Canada and around the world will, had marked the start of the holy month of Ramadan. Muslims in Canada and around the world will begin this month. It's a time of reflection, and over the coming month, Muslims will fast from sunrise to sunset, breaking their fast with dates and shared meals, iftar. This month is also a time for the community to come together spiritually by taking part in nightly prayers. Many members of the Muslim community will renew their commitments to better themselves and the world around them through acts of charity, continued empathy, and generosity to those who need it most. Ramadan is also an important, an opportunity, sorry, to celebrate and recognize the incredible contributions of Muslim Canadians to our country. Muslim Canadians are a part of what makes Canada what it is today. However, they continue to be targeted by unacceptable hate crimes and discrimination. The federal government is taking action to tackle hate and discrimination by renewing the federal anti-racism strategy, which we've already also asked for, to them, working on the creation of a new national action plan on combating hate and appointing a special representative on combating Islamophobia. These are important steps. They also are continuing work with affected communities and individuals in the shared fight against all the forces that seek to divide us. So as Mayor of the City of St. John, I extend my best wishes to everyone observing this sacred month as well. And that's it, thank you very much. City Clerk, over to you for the next item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next on the agenda is a proclamation, item 7.1, and this is for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
Thank you. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time requiring police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas during an emergency, the prompt response of police, officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens contacting the Public Safety Communications Center, and whereas the Public Safety Communications Center is the first link to citizens seeking emergency services, and whereas every year during the second week of April, the telecommunications personnel in the public safety community are honored nationally, and whereas April 10th to 16, 2022 is recognized as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and whereas the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is a time to celebrate and thank the Public Safety Communications Center operations for their compassion, understanding, and professionalism in their performance of duty serving the public. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donna Nodreardon of St. John, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10 to 16, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, in honor of those whose diligence and professionalism keep our citizens and our city safe. Thank you, City Man, thank you, City Clerk. Next item?
Your Worship, we have about two minutes before the public hearing. We could move over to quickly do the items from Committee of the Whole.
Okay, sure. Okay, so Committee of the Whole items, Counselor Killen, you're, you are a conflict on first two, so we'll get to those. 17.1?
So 17.1, Your Worship, was the Committee of the Whole recommendation with respect to the lease at the City Market, and it would read, "Resolve that the city enter into a lease for the stall F and ancillary spaces in City Market with Sisters Italian Foods Limited operating under the business name Sisters Italian Foods, under the terms and conditions set out in the lease submitted with MNC 2022-101. Further be resolved that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any necessary documents."
Okay, I'll take a motion for that, please. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor, the deputy on the question. Counsel Redwan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share briefly why I'm voting against this one. I just wanted to see the lease tightened up. I'm 100% in support of having these businesses in the City Market, and I've shared specifics in Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Counselor. I will say for the public that the, you do have a strategic team, a strategic planning team for the City Market that will look at a number of things, including what is the City Market, what does the city want to be? Food, are they combos? What are the hours? Are they an incubator? What's the signage? Is, are we a grocery store? How do we, how do we mitigate that if we complement a grocery store? Are we competition? So that all is going to be looked at, but I do thank you for your comments, Counselor. So I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Counsel Redwan opposed and motion carried. Thank you. City Clerk, over to you for the next item.
Your Worship, it's now 6:30, public hearing time, so we can go back to the scheduled item in the agenda. And so this item appears on your agenda as 9.1, and it's a public hearing with a proposed zoning bylaw amendment and Planning Advisory Committee report recommending the rezoning at 35 Margaret Street.
Okay, Commissioner Hamilton, I'm going over to you for the introduction for this.
Good evening, Your Worship. Members of council, before you for public hearing this evening is an application for a rezoning submitted by Alan Goble for a property at 35 Margaret Street, which is located in an established residential neighborhood in East St. John. The application is seeking a rezoning of the property from the two-unit residential zone to low-rise residential in, in order to legalize an existing four-unit dwelling, and the proposal, I would point out, does not involve any changes to the exterior of the building. The application has been evaluated by staff and the Planning Advisory Committee, and there are recommendations before you to approve the rezoning, and I can note that no public submissions were received up to this point related to the matter. Since the file involves remedying an existing compliance situation, staff are recommending the third reading be withheld to ensure the proposal can satisfy requirements set out in the National Building Code. And tonight, while there's no staff presentation, Andrew Reed is the staff planner handling the file, is available if there are any other further questions from council. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Commissioner. So what I will do is I will open the public hearing initially, and then when we close it, we'll go to questions to Andrew Reed if there are any. So I will ask if there is anyone on the screen virtually who would like, or anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application? Sorry, again, sorry, I got that wrong. I'm asking if any, if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application We don't have anyone registered to speak against the application, but I'll ask three times, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak against the application? Anyone who would like to speak against the application? Okay, I'll ask if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of the application? And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application? If not, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask council if anyone has any questions. So before we go to debate, I'll ask if anyone has any questions for staff, which would be Mr. Reed. Any questions? Okay, Counselor Harris, you have a question for staff?
Yeah, it's just a quick question, Your Worship, through you. To Mr. Reed, I think, or Commissioner Hamilton. Am I right in seeing that one of the, with this proposed zoning bylaw change, that we are moving from a higher density to a lower density on this?
Your Worship, the property is currently zoned two-unit residential, so we'd be moving to a higher-density zone?
Okay.
Which is low-rise residential.
Okay, I did misunderstand that, because I was looking at it a couple of times, and just the way it was worded or how I was reading it, just wanted a clarification. Thanks.
No problem. Okay, so if that's it for questions for staff, I'll get a motion on the floor then, before we go with debate. I've got Counselor Lowe and Counselor Redwan. Anyone have any comments?
Your Worship, we'd be looking for two motions for first reading by title and second reading by title.
First reading by title. Counselor, Counselor Lowe and Counselor Redwan. I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Allow to amend the zoning bylaw of the City of St. John. And now, second motion, Your Worship, for second reading by title.
Second reading by title, the deputy and Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Allow to amend the zoning bylaw of the City of St. John.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Next, Your Worship, we have a bylaw under item 10.1 on your agenda, and this is a bylaw respecting the use of sidewalks within the City of St. John. This is for third reading.
Thank you. Commissioner Hamilton, you're giving us a brief intro on this one.
Yes, good evening, Your Worship. Members of council, before you this evening for third reading are proposed amendments to the Use of Sidewalks bylaw. These change- These changes are intended to improve clarity and predictability for applicants seeking permission to use the right-of-way for sidewalk cafes or vending. And for council's information, as I indicated during first reading, the issue of waiving fees for sidewalk cafes is outside the scope of these changes and will be addressed at a future council meeting in coordination with planned economic and community recovery programming for this year. And with that, I'd just add that Barb Crawford, our municipal engineer with our permitting and infrastructure service, is available virtually if there are any questions from members of council. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you for the required motions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the team deputy? I see your, your light is on.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to Barb Crawford. Is there a certain bar on this? Like if somebody wanted to put out something decorative, like, you know, a planter or, you know, a rocking chair or something like that in front of their shop, just to make it dressed up a little bit on a sunny day? What, what's the standards? Like, I don't understand that.
Through your worship to the deputy. Great question. Anything decorative on the sidewalk? We don't, we don't really police through this bylaw. This is just for the use of sidewalks for a sidewalk cafe. So if you wanted to put a planter on, on the sidewalk similar to what Tondies has in front of their front windows, we would be fine with that.
Okay, so is there, like, when you say a cafe, is there a, like, if you had one chair and a small table where you could have a cup of tea, is that a cafe? Or has it got to be a table of four or higher? I guess my question.
Yep. So under our Use of Sidewalks bylaw, we define that as a Level One sidewalk cafe, which includes tables and chairs within the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Barb, can I ask you a quick question as well? You know, when you say in, in the sidewalk, on the sidewalk, is the, the brick where grass would normally be, is that considered the sidewalk as well? Okay. And then if we go, you go onto the street, that'll be another, a different, taking a parking spot, I believe it said in there. I guess what, you know, I guess I have not the same, not a concern, but, and I know that's going to, will come back, but I just want to make sure that we can still get the streets animated, right? Yes, okay.
Yeah, so the Level One sidewalk cafes include tables and chairs. So last year, you, you may recall, AMET that was on King Street had sidewalk, or some chairs and tables. Pomodori had chairs and tables. Catapult Coffee, for example, had chairs and tables. That's a Level One sidewalk cafe. The fees for that, they were waived in 2021, but that's about $140 a year to have a table and chair on the sidewalk. It, it's a low cost to, to the business.
Okay. All right. So City Clerk, I guess I need.
Your Worship, this item, we need two motions. First would be a motion to provide a reading in summary, and second, a motion, third reading by title.
Okay, so for the first motion, approve third reading by summary. I need a mover. Counselor Hickey? Can't wait a minute, I got to ask a question of the clerk. If Counselor Hickey wasn't here for the first thing, can he vote on that?
He can, Your Worship. That would only exclude, be excluded from a public hearing. This is not a public hearing.
Couldn't remember how that worked. Thank you. Counselor Hickey, over to you. Counselor Hickey. Counselor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Your Worship, this is a bylaw respecting the use of sidewalks within the City of St. John and amendments thereto. And the summary of the bylaw is that the amendments in the bylaw clarifies insurance requirements for sidewalk cafes, parking fees, and submission requirements for sidewalk cafes, confirmation of liquor license extensions, permission requirements for sidewalk vendor sites, and removes outdated and superseded sections of the bylaw. And now a second motion for a third reading by title.
Third reading by title, Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Redwine on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A bylaw respecting the use of sidewalks within the City of St. John and amendments thereto.
Over to you, City Manager.
Your Worship, and members of council, forgive me, but we did overlook one motion that is required on item 9.1.1. There was a staff recommendation to withhold third reading and adoption of the proposed rezoning is not given until the applicant submits a building permit application illustrating the necessary improvements to meet the 2015 National Building Code to the satisfaction of the city's building inspectors. We would need that motion put on the floor and voted.
Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Hickey, was it, on the question? All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, City Clerk, next item.
Next, we have under Committee Reports, item 13 on the agenda, item 13.1. This is a report from the Finance Committee, Canada Emergency Wage Subsidy.
Counselor Sullivan, over to you, please.
It is a receivable file. I'll move the receivable file, and with a second arrow, give an executive summary to the executive summary.
Counsel Redwine.
Thanks, Your Worship. Thanks, Counselor. Just, this item is with regards to the Canada Emergency Wage Subsidy in the Canada Games Aquatic Center. The Canada Games Aquatic Center received notice from the CRA. They would have to repay the Canada Emergency Wage subsidy claims that were submitted as they were deemed ineligible. The liability has been appropriately recorded on the 2020 audited financial statements of both the city and the Canada Games Aquatic Center, so that's why it's a receivable file.
Any questions for the counselor, who is Chair of your Finance Committee? All right, on the question then? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item, City Clerk.
Next item is 13.2 on the agenda, and it's another Finance Committee submission with respect to capital reserve funds for modernized solid waste collection model.
Thank you. Back over to you, Counselor Sullivan.
Thanks, Your Worship. The motion and the recommendation here is to endorse the allocation of up to $400,000 from our capital reserve funds to cover an unfunded portion of the expense required to implement the new solid waste collection model.
I'll take a second there on that. Deputy? Okay, Counselor.
Thanks, Your Worship. Thanks, deputy. Finance Committee was provided a report with the status of the new solid waste collection model for the city. A reminder, this was introduced to provide environmental benefits through waste diversion and productivity and safety benefits for our employees. The price of the supplies has increased since the original quote was received, and as such, the estimated cost will increase to a maximum of $400,000. The city has completed its due diligence to ensure best prices were found and incorporated, the new prices into the business model, which provides a return in six years through service efficiencies. The recommendation is to approve the increase in the budget to a maximum, to a maximum of $400,000.
Thank you, Counselor. Questions? Counselor Redwine?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick comment about this one. We've already seen this at finance, like Counselor Sullivan said. So, I mean, obviously, I mean, I am a big supporter of recycling and composting, and I think that there are some great opportunities to keep staff safe, so I'm definitely in full support of that. With that said, you know, I feel like we're spending a lot of money without enough consultation, so that is why I'm voting against this.
Thank you, Counselor. Before we, I call the question, I will say that for the last council, but had to buy some property to get marine-grade mud so that we could line more cells. So the part, the big emphasis of this is to reduce solid waste. We don't want our plastics ending up in the garbage. We want recycling. We know it's cheaper, way cheaper, to tip compost than it is solid waste. So with, you know that your, that your, your sites will eventually, that the marine-grade blood, or the marine-grade mud is self-healing, so, but it still can leach, so you still have some environmental issues. So the whole drive of this is not only to just protect our staff, it's also to do that separation, do what's right for your planet. So this is where we're going. We just want to keep up. The whole world's doing it. So I'll call the question. Oh, sorry, Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you, Worship. But just for the benefit of council, who may not have been at the Finance Committee meeting, this was quite a conversation, and I'm glad that Counselor Redwine brought it up. As you'll see in the report, the planned rollout is for most of St. John, but not all of St. John, because staff still plan to do consultation in neighborhoods where concerns have been raised, particularly, and Counselor Redwine can correct me if I'm wrong, around the ability to pay and storage of the bins. So those conversations are still happening, and I thought just because it wasn't in the report, I should mention that the $400,000 is being recommended to come from our capital reserve. That's that rainy day fund, which currently has about a little under $7.3 million available in it, so the money is there to do it without putting a big dent in the fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Harris.
Yeah, Your Worship, my question, it's related to this, we are in this gap here, you had a rolling this out. Meanwhile, Regional Service Commission has begun to roll back their capacity and ability to aging machinery and infrastructure for the current blue bin system. There's been a lot of complaints. I don't know if the city, as far as blue bins not getting emptied on time and being overrun. I'm just looking for a bit of a high-level view here from the city manager possibly, or somebody else who's kind of connected here. What's the timeline? What's the gap? Do we expect that to get worse in the interim, when this is fully rolled out and working? Because it does seem like there's either another piece of equipment gone down, or there's a blue bin that's just constantly full. That's the kind of stuff I'm hearing, so I'm just looking for a view on that.
I'm going to pass this one over to the Commissioner, Huguenholtz, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you to the counselor. I, I can't speak specifically to any service provision issues that the Regional Solid Waste Commission may have had, but I can speak in general that, you know, it is their intent to phase out the blue bin system of collection somewhere later this year, around October, November. So that, we are in pretty frequent discussion with our regional partners there, and we're basically designing the rollout of our program to ensure there is no gap, that by the time they phase out their blue bin program, that we actually have curbside recycling collection for all residents of the city.
Okay, and so on the emptying of the blue bins, there's that, I know that, that I've talked to Brenda McCollum, and she mentioned that, you know, they're always, that they're not always informed of when these blue bins are overflowing or full. Does the city play a role in informing the Fundi Recycles that picks up these? Are they supposed to have eyes on this? I know there does seem to be a missing link here, is all. And I know it's because they're winding their program down and we're winding ours up. So, I mean, we were told basically, call them when we see full bins, but that, it seems like there's just too much coordination failure there.
Yeah, through, through you, Your Worship. We, we don't necessarily always keep eyes on those blue bins. If our staff do drive by and notice they're full or overflowing, we'll certainly reach out and make a phone call. But generally speaking, they design their collection system to account for the waste that they typically get in a, in the run of a week, and they constantly have trucks going around emptying these things out. Would encourage counselors or citizens to report any of those issues directly to the Fundi Regional Solid Waste Commission, should you see those overflowing.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you, Counselor. City Manager, do you want to?
Your Worship, if I may, I'll just add on, the first point of contact of any citizens who feel that the, the bins are overflowing is absolutely the Solid Waste Commission or Fundi Regional Service Commission. But if they don't have those numbers readily available, they can call our customer service, and our customer service will pass on the observation. We have no role to play in the emptying of those bins. It is not our service that we provide, but we'll make a point of passing on that information to those who are responsible for the service. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Redwine. Over to you again.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I just wanted to, I mean, maybe explain myself a little bit better. So there has been, there has been some consultation done with residents, because there was a pilot program that went out. It did not have a great survey result. I am worried that if we don't do enough risk mitigation before this gets rolled out, that it's, you know, if you think your customer service line's ringing now, it's going to ring a lot. So, you know, I'm encouraging staff to try to figure out what sort of hiccups that we're going to have before we actually roll this out. This is an investment of almost $2 million, so it's extremely important not to put the cart before the horse.
Thank you, Counselor. And I'll say that it's a cultural shift, for sure, for us, and something I'm looking forward to. So I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Redwine opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, City Clerk, next item.
Next item is a subitem to 13.2, and it's 13.2.1. This is a solid waste modernization report entitled Procurement and Delivery Bins and Totes.
All right, Counselor, Commissioner Huguenholtz, over to you for procurement of totes.
Good evening again, Your Worship. This item before you now is a simple award of contract. It normally would have been on the consent agenda, however, this was predicated on council's approval of the additional budget support from reserves, as covered by Counselor Sullivan. So this is, this award will include the supply of the carts and totes to support the new solid waste collection model. So the, the information is there, and we did see some escalation in costs on the carts in particular, due to some supply chain issues. However, with the approval this evening, we'll go ahead and order those and start the rollout as soon as they are received and distributed to our citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner. Does, does anyone have any questions for the Commissioner? If not, I'll take a motion. Counselor Killen and Counselor Ogden on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Redwine opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Next item, City Clerk.
Your Worship, next item is under General Correspondence on your agenda, item 15, and the first is item 15.1, a letter from St. John Community Arts Board, 2022 St. John Community Arts Funding Program. And there's a recommendation from staff to receive this for information.
Okay, it's in the kit there. They, they have the community arts grants and who the recipients are, so you can refer to the kit to see who, who received them. But I will take a motion to receivable file or receive for information. Counselor Killen and Counselor Harris on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item.
Next is item 15.2. It's another letter, and it's from Kaleidoscope Social Impact, request for letter of support for the House of Merit, Support of Housing Project. There's a recommendation from staff to refer this to the city manager for the drafting of a letter and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of council.
Thank you, City Clerk. This one here, Kaleidoscope Social Impact, used to, their name previously was the Community Loan Fund, if any, it's all in the kit there. And this is to refer the city manager, and then we'll also authorize it rather than waiting another two weeks for the letter to come back. Okay, so on the, I'll need a motion. Counselor Hickey, deputy, on the question? Counsel, oh, Counselor Harris, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a quick comment before, I just think this is such a great initiative. You know, St. John Loan Fund, now Kaleidoscope, Social Impact, this is a big issue in our, in our community, and if anybody is paying attention to affordable housing issues and woes in our community, you know, this is a group that is attempting to work on it, to provide, you know, unique housing opportunities in areas where we desperately need it. So I would definitely tell you to go look at them and stay in touch with them, sign up for their newsletter, get involved at the hub, but we really do need about three or four more of these groups who are out there actively pushing the envelope. So again, lots of people, lots of great people at Kaleidoscope to get involved with and learn from, if anybody's interested in taking that jump, but this is a great, great initiative. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I think we have the motion on the floor, so I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item, City Clerk.
And next, under General Correspondence, item 15.3, there's another submission. It's from GBS CIDP Foundation of Canada, request to proclaim May 2022 as GBS and CIDB Awareness Month, and there's a recommendation to refer this to the city manager.
Okay, so I'll take a. Okay, so I'll take a motion. Deputy from you, councillor Stewart, on the question? You have a question? Oh, no, sorry. On the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item.
And your worship, next, we're back to the items that were brought from committee of the whole. So there's an item seventeen point two, and this is a city market lease recommendation. And it's a city market lease recommendation with Black Douglas Holding Limited. And the recommendation reads that the city resolved that the city enter into a lease for stall fifteen and ancillary spaces to city with Black Douglas Holding Limited, DBA Sagratis, under the terms and conditions as set out in the lease submitted with MNC 2022-107, and further be resolved that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the said surrender lease and any documents ancillary thereto.
Okay, so I'll take a motion. Deputy and councillor Hickey on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Councillor Edwan opposed, motion carried. Next item.
Your worship, just waiting for the councillor. And the final item was from committee of the whole is with respect to appointments to committees. And I'll just quickly read out what the those appointments would be. So the recommended appointments from committee of the whole are for city market strategic plan steering committee, appoint Becky Knox for three year term effective April fourth. City of St. John's Shared Risk Pension Plan to reappoint Andrew Green for a four year term effective April fourth. Civic Commemoration Committee to appoint councillors Ogden and councillor Hickey from April fourth to the end of their current terms on council, and to appoint Heidi McDonald, Krista Downey, Jocelyn Stevens, Carl Killen, and Misty Schofield for three year terms effective April fourth, 2022. Lord Beaverbrook Rink to appoint Heather McBriarty for a three year term effective April 29th, 2022. Planning Advisory Committee to appoint Phil Colmo for a three year term effective April fourth, 2022. St. John Community Arts Board to appoint Wayme Lee for a three year term effective April fourth, 2022. St. John Energy to appoint Colleen Dontruman and Stephanie Bell for three year terms from July July eighth, 2022, and September fourth, 2022, respectively. And for St. John Substandard Property Appeals Committee to appoint David Brown for a three year term effective April fourth, 2022. And finally, Trade and Convention Center Commission Oversight Commission to appoint Richard Peters for a three year term effective April fourth, 2022.
Thank you. I'll take a motion. Councillor Edwan, councillor Hickey on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. And that's it. So before I say adieu, I just want to say this has got to be, what, the quickest meeting? I want to go down in history for the city of St. John, where we started late. It wasn't even it was past six o'clock, and it's not seven yet. It's eighteen hundred and fifty nine. So I will take a motion to adjourn. Councillor Sullivan, councillor Killen, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.